Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City Council Work Session for December 13th. Balmy, warm.
It's 30 degrees.
December 13th. The first item on our agenda tonight is Committee Reports and Items of Interest, and I wanted to tell you, first of all, that I saw new Mayor Lundberg at the MPC meeting and took her a congratulatory bouquet of flowers on our behalf to welcome her to her new job. And while talking about Springfield, I can't remember if we said something about this at our last meeting or not, but anyway, we purchased 10 jail beds from Springfield, which will help with our public safety, downtown public safety issues. I want to appreciate City Manager John and CRG, the folks who are working on Envision Eugene, for their presentation at City Club. It seems to have been really well received, and I've heard about it from a lot of people. Want to recognize, we had a really, on Friday, we had a really good International Human Rights Day event, and Counselor Brown and Counselor Ortiz were there, I think, and thank you for doing that. We have two Envision Eugene meetings going on this week. I can't remember if I told you that we got in, some of the states that were giving back some of their rail money has been finding its way into our corridor, which is a good thing. So Oregon got a relatively small portion again, but what benefits the whole corridor benefits us, and so it ends up being a sizable amount and something that keeps us moving forward. And I'm hosting an education forum tomorrow evening here at City Hall from 7:00 to 9:00. Talk about options for supporting our schools. People wanted to do that, and I've said I would help them have that opportunity. The Eagan Memorial Program this week for really bringing attention to homeless vets is this week also. And then the other, only other thing I want to mention was, I hope you get a chance to go out to LCC and see the new longhouse. It is, it's incredible. It is just a gorgeous piece and really feels like you've entered something when you enter it. And they've worked on that like for, I think, like 15 years or something, so it's quite a contribution to the community and a recognition of our heritage here. So with that, Mike.
I just have a quick follow-up question.
Yes.
Why are states giving back their rail money?
Well, some had quite a large amount, and once they, they made promises while they were running for office, and so when they got into office, they decided to give it back. And so it's been being redistributed to other states.
Hmm.
And we are happy.
It's been a lot of money, too.
And we are happy to be stimulated by that right there.
(laughing).
Okay, Mike, sorry.
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I too got an opportunity to meet with Springfield's new mayor, Christine Lundberg, today and congratulated her. Had a chance to attend the Police Commission meeting on the night with, along with Counselor Brown, and in it, we got closer to completing the long-term review of the use-of-force policy by subsection and individual pieces and updating from Lexa Pole work, and that proceeds along. We also got a review from the chief of the parts of the downtown public safety zones implementation, and he was doing an education piece for the Police Commission to help them understand how they'll implement that, and there were a number of officers in the room that we got to talk about both the, that, how that piece will be used downtown, as well as the questions that some of us had around some of the policy review pieces. He also then talked with us, walked step-by-step through the final, final taser policy that he has now completed, and with very, very few minor, just really one or two small wording changes to the policy that the, that was approved by Police Commission and sent on to him. So, thank you.
George?
Last week, Chris and I both were at a joint EMX Steering Committee and WEC meeting, where an elected official from other than the city announced that the City of Eugene is going to be choosing a route, which kind of set some of the people off. So I reassured the people in the audience that, and I hope my fellow counselors are keeping an open mind that until it comes time to actually vote, that we haven't chosen a route yet. And in fact, the TSM and the No Build is still an option on the table that we, as a council, will be, be looking at when it comes time. So just in case you hear anything that was made, statement made in the meeting last week. Travel Lane County Board Meeting last week, it was brought up that the League of Oregon Cities and the Association of Oregon Counties is going to be bringing up to the state legislature to repeal the law that was put in effect in 1993 on how transit room tax is being distributed. It'll give the county the authority to make the determination on how it will be distributed, which could, in the long run, devastate the Travel Lane County, the tourism industry people here in Lane County. It's my belief that no matter how much money is taken away from them, we're going to lose big time. By the work that this organization does promoting tourism and promoting Lane County and Eugene Cascade Coast, I think it would be a huge mistake for us to support any change in the current way that the transit room tax is, is being passed out or divvied up, unless, of course, they hold the travel industry or the Travel Lane County in our case, if they hold it, hold harmless. I think the organization does far more for us, and we'd be shooting ourselves in the foot. John, in reference to the jail beds, we're renting 10 of them. Is that 10 all the time or just as they're occupied, they're going to be charging us?
Just as they're occupied.
Okay, good, very good. And since I probably will be late for Wednesday's meeting, and this is Jennifer's last Monday night meeting, I just want to thank Jennifer for the eight years that she's given to our city and the passion and compassion that she's put into the work that she's done for the City of Eugene and on the council. And we're going to miss, miss having you at the table. Being replaced by Pat Farr is, it's not going to be the same, looking across the table at me as you. And I just want, just want to reflect back that four years before you and I ran for the first time in 2002, we started talking about running for City Council together. And it's been a, you know, it's been my, it's just been a real honor to work with you, Jennifer, and again, thank you very much for your service.
Leads right into you.
Well, thank you, George. We go way back, and I just want to thank you for walking me to my car every night to make sure that I'm safe in the dark, you know, underground. I appreciate that. I have had three committee reports in the, I've had, attended three committee meetings in the past week. First of all, I had PSCC, the Public Safety Coordinating Council. We met this week, time at the Springfield Justice Center, and we all got a tour. It's a really great building, and I love the PSCC for its model of cooperation. They're sort of in-between projects right now, they're not, so it was more of an information-sharing meeting, but it's, it's really a great group, and I think there's a lot of opportunity for them to do important things around public safety. Then I had the Metropolitan Waste Water Management Commission. Again, that's another model of phenomenal intergovernmental cooperation, and I would truly encourage any of my colleagues that have not served on the MWMC to do so. It's just really an interesting service that they provide. I mean, we have to have it, and it's quite also interesting to learn of just the federal mandates that they have to live up to in providing their service. So that's, that's a great group of folks to work with. And then today, I had the Human Services Commission. They are undergoing a new process, a new funding model, that there's, you know, we've been working on this for about two years now, and there's always some hiccups and some friction along the way when you start to do something new, but I really hope that folks will give it a try and see what the results are after a couple of years. And so it's been a huge privilege to work for, work on all three of those committees. I also served a number of years on the Housing Policy Board, and I really appreciated that as well. So that's one thing that I've enjoyed about City Council, is just the other opportunities that you can, it's not just all of what happens here at the table. There's a lot of stuff behind the scenes and other committee work that's important to making not only the City of Eugene work, but the City of Eugene, Springfield, and Lane County work together. And so it's been a great privilege. Thank you.
You, George?
I went to the Police Commission, Counselor Clark. I went Friday, I went to the, it was International Human Rights Day, and there was a celebration at the Baker Center downtown. Counselor Ortiz was there, Mayor Percy spoke, Greg Rickoff from the UVO spoke, City Manager Ree spoke. Basically, it was a celebration, and there was good music, there was good concerts, good talk, celebration of progress and admonitions to keep working because there's still a lot to do. It was a good event. And it was very well-attended. Friday night, I was really surprised, there were actually a lot of people that weren't in a bar that decided to go to the Human Rights Celebration. It was kind of downtown, it was kind of nice.
That was how it works. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry I was late. I didn't realize it was getting late. I, so I attended just a few things this last couple of weeks. I did attend the Human Rights Celebration with, with George and the mayor. I was really impressed with Greg Rickoff when he was an employee here. I mean, he was one of the, he really was welcoming, and part of the reason I spent so much time on the Human Rights Commission was his leadership and Francisco's and Karen Hyatt. And being Greg, you know, he didn't want to share the podiums, he didn't want to, he wanted to share the podium. He didn't want to just get up there and talk, so he brought up the two staff workers, Karen Hyatt and Francisco Johnson, and just kind of did this good, bad, and the ugly of working in that office. And I just, that's just typical Greg, you know, I mean, he's very inclusive, very supportive of the people around him, and I do miss him as an employee. The other, and the Human Rights Celebration itself was pretty, pretty good. I was really impressed. They did a lot of work on that, and it's good to see that that avenue is still continuing in our city. The other thing that I've been spending a lot of time at Bethel, I'm on the Long-Term Budget Committee, and they're looking at, you know, the needs for the future and what's going on now and the kind of things that they want to do. And they have a little bit of concern, the Budget Committee, about any possibility that the city might be willing to do any kind of a tax or any kind of a bond for them, because they're going to look, probably in the same timeframe, is my understanding, for a operation, an operating bond to do long-term facility works. The high school at Willamette sadly needs a roof. There's a lot of things that they haven't been doing. They usually do one capital project a year, and they haven't been able to do anything for the last couple of years because they're putting all their money into staffing and trying to keep the classrooms down as low as they do. So if we, so with the thought, with that in mind, you know, I hope when, if there is any energy around doing something like that, we definitely consult them and let them know what's going on, and I'm sure Colt will be at the table with us. And that's all I have to share.
Alan?
I, instead of going to the Human Rights Celebration, I went to another celebration, which is the City of Springfield Holiday Party for Employees. My wife's an employee there, so I did that instead. But it sounds like I missed a good event. Speaking of celebrations, one of our local troops done good on the rocks is on Sing Off on NBC on national television. They made it through the first two rounds, so they're the a cappella group, men's a cappella group from UVO. They're really good. They're on tonight, actually. But don't watch that, watch us, if you're still.
Oh, let me think.
I'll take one of the others.
Would you be more compelling?
Yeah. Depends. I also attended MPC. That was my last meeting as chair, and as my final, one of my final things was to go to El Cog, where Chris is the chair, to give the annual report. And I think that got forwarded to, to all the counselors, the MPC annual report. If not, can we get that forwarded? I can make sure it's with all of them. Yeah, and at MPC, we, the mayor was very gracious. She brought Christine Lundberg, the new mayor of Springfield, some flowers, and so we all congratulated her. It was really confusing for me, because every time I'd say, "Madam Mayor," they both would look at me.
I'm not used to be there anymore.
Yeah, right, it got confusing. I also want to thank the mayor for putting on the school funding forum tomorrow. I think that'll be an interesting conversation to start and have within this community about how we can help schools, and if we do, how we would do it. Sustainability Commission is tomorrow, Wednesday, 5:30. I also met with the No Build people from MX and had a breakfast meeting with them, heard out what they had to say, a lot of food for thought, and had a conversation with them. I very much appreciate this calendar. I think this is a great tool. It gives me a good glance of everything that's going on this week in a different way that's really useful to me, so I like this. Also met with Joan Manager, new General Manager, Roger Gray from E-Web about master planning, water master planning around the Vinita and the water rights issue with Brenda and some other folks. And then finally, Jennifer, it's your second-to-last meeting, so all those hours you spent away from your family for all these many years, thank you for all your service to the city, and I'll miss you.
I'm going to miss you, too.
Chris?
Oh, thank you. Three quick things. The first one was, El Cog did meet last week, and they're moving right along, getting a lot of great stuff done, and probably the, the most boring part of the meeting was having the presentation from the MPC.
Yeah. Yeah, I just read it. It only took me 30, 45 minutes.
It sounds better when you have the snare drum to do the thing on it, but any, that was good. And then also, the Housing Policy Board met, and is actually actively looking for a couple of members to replace some folks who've gone off. So if you think you might be interested in serving on the Housing Policy Board, that would definitely be a good one, and there'll be a process you might contact to find out how that works. That's actually a combination of Lane County, Springfield, and Eugene, so it's a, it's a combined effort. And they're working on their next round of grants that they're going to be doing for affordable housing, which is very exciting, and they're wanting to do it in a little better way so it's more efficient and doesn't cost the bidders a lot of money, but still has a lot of input. The last thing I wanted to mention very quickly is, I just got back from Portland today. I was attending the Oregon Business Plan Meeting, the Leadership Summit, and not only current Governor Kulungoski was there, but Governor-elect Kitzhauer gave one of the keynote speeches. Merkley, Wyden, Blumenauer, several folks from the Oregon Legislature, our delegation was there, school districts were there. The conversation was very robust from the standpoint that, this is kind of one of those bad news, good news kinds of things. The bad news is, if we're waiting for the economy to recover the way it was before, don't bother, don't wait. We have to talk about economic development in ways that we've never talked about it before. The conversations we had at this table 10 years ago don't work anymore. And that's not just about economic development, it's also about healthcare, it's also about education. We have to have an entirely new conversation to approach this in a way that's going to work for now. The good news is, in Eugene, we are a catalyst and a leader in terms of how we are beginning to address some of these issues. And the man who wrote Reinventing Government was there to give a presentation, and he put a screen up of this new, great innovative effort that's being, sweeping the country, which is a new budgeting system called in Budget for Outcomes. And he had a list of the cities that have adopted it, and there we were, right there, the only city in Oregon that is currently using budgeting for outcomes. The good news part is, we are at the leading edge of what we need to be doing in order to meet this new economy as it occurs. It's really a tremendous opportunity. There are very great things there, but we cannot approach this the way we have in the past. And so it was a great agenda, it was a really good session. I'm glad I went, and I will share, this is a PDF. I can share this stuff with all of you, so that you can have it.
Thanks, Chris. Betty?
Thanks. On Saturday, I met with a group of neighborhood leaders. It's called, it's ENI, and I'm not, it's Eugene Neighbors, it's a neighborhood leaders, what is it? Inc., well, but what's, anyway, I told, they wanted me to talk, tell them about our proposed new assessment policies, and they were very enthusiastic, and they hope that we, they hope and I hope that we pass the things that the committee recommended. And they thought that they would like it to go still further, but they thought it was very good news, and, and were sorry that it couldn't be retroactive for the people involved in press-friendly story. Which is something else I wanted to talk about. I got a call from someone who's looking forward, anticipating the assessment for the street improvements. And we have a possibility of applying for low-income status. She applied and was told that it does not apply to the income this year, but to last year's income. In this case, her husband just lost his job. And I don't understand that, why it wouldn't apply to the current income instead of what your income used to be.
We can check into it, so we can get some details on who it is from you. I don't.
I left a message with Mark Shonig about that last Friday, but it was Friday afternoon when I did it, and I haven't heard anything. It seems that I, I continue to be very concerned about those people who can't afford to pay the assessments. And I, the thing with this group that I met with, one of the things they liked best was the idea that you can postpone, if you need to, paying until the house changes ownership, till the property changes ownership, because it means that people don't have to really worry about losing their homes, that most people won't choose to do that, but they, and they did, one thing they asked me was, did we get good cooperation from staff? And I said, yes, it was excellent. And on the committee, that is. It's funny. I'm just delimiting it. That's what we were talking about. I attended a McKenzie Watershed Council meeting. They continue, there were a lot of, they continue to do good things restoring habitat with, using high school students, which is really good. But there were a number of property owners from, whose property abuts to McKenzie at the meeting, and they're still very upset about the plans to protect the water, I guess. The Watershed Council is offered to meet with them again, and there were, the people from E-Web who were there also offered to meet with them. But they said that things took them by surprise, and, and they are very concerned, and some of them are going to join the Watershed Council as property owners. And that's enough for now.
John? City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick things, just to fill in a couple of details that you mentioned on the Eagan Warming Center. The memorial service will be Friday the 17th at 11:00 on the corner of West, First, and Blair, and there'll be a wreath-laying ceremony with guest speakers, special presentations, those kinds of things. And then also, I attended the International Human Rights Day Celebration on Friday, as several of you mentioned, and had the opportunity to present to several employees just a recognition for their work on accessibility and diversity and equality. So it was a good evening.
Just before we turn away from this, I, because you brought up the MX meeting, George, I wanted to say that we've had, since I think we last met, the, I can never remember what, there's so many acronyms, but it's the one that LTD has put together, it has city representation, LTD representation, MPC representation. And, and then that one is just sort of a really getting in and examining the alternatives and looking at the mitigation efforts and all of that, and we'll come back to council. So I just want to be clear that we'll come back with a recommendation, but it's certainly a council decision after all that is in place. I wanted to comment on the Human Services Commission that Jennifer talked about, just because some people in the community are really worried about some of the projects are not getting funded in this process, because they have 20% less funds to distribute. And people have been sending us mail, I sent you something today, but I'm saying this for everybody else, this now goes to the Board of County Commissioners, and that's the place, if people have interest in being heard from about who is chosen and who wasn't, that's the place it resides right now. So I just wanted to give that information out. I wanted to assure Andrea that in the Education Funding Meeting tomorrow night, which just gives people a chance to talk about options, Colt Gill, the Superintendent of Bethel, is going to be one of the presenters. Tim Keely and Alan Lazier have both been on the group that's been working on it, so it's, it has strong Bethel representation. And I wanted to just encourage you all, because I think some of you weren't here when we said this, but Jan is still looking for those State of the City comments that you're all responsible for getting, and I have threatened to write yours for you if you don't get your.
Why is she looking at this end of the table? My, you know.
Andrea, I think the threat was directed towards me, I think, maybe.
No, they've all heard this once. And the other thing is, some of you have already done this, but please get, get your committee choices into me so that we, I can start working on that, because we need to figure those out for the beginning of the, of the year.
MWMC has great snacks at 7:30 in the morning.
There's two work session calls out that George put out.
Yes.
I have a question.
Yes.
Why did, why wasn't I told that I wasn't the only one who was late with that, with that statement? I just sent mine in today.
Feeling guilty?
I sent mine in today, but.
Try to work guilt one at a time, you know, we get it.
You're affected that way.
I thought I was the only one.
Okay. With that, I think we're ready to move on to our work session first item, and that's the adoption of federal warranty project lists. City Manager?
Thank you, and I'll just turn it over to Brenda.
Welcome, Brenda.
Good evening, Mayor. As a City Council for the record, Brenda Wilson, Intergovernmental Relations Manager. This is John. So it's that time of year. Every year, as you know, we develop a federal priorities list to submit to our federal delegation and federal agencies for congressionally-directed spending, also known as earmarks. And every year, when we develop this list, we take a look at the funding opportunities that are available at the federal level. And this year, unlike recent years, it's going to be a little bit different. So as you know, the Republican Party has taken over the US House of Representatives, and they have decided to extend their policy on the ban of earmarks or congressionally-directed spending. There has been a vote in the Senate, because the Democrats are still in leadership in the Senate, a vote in the Senate to ban earmarks as well. That vote failed. So as of right now, it looks like the Senate may still put through earmarks, but those earmarks will be very limited. So given that information, and we'll continue to keep a close eye on this and see where federal spending is directed, we've developed a federal priorities list. So I'll talk about the current status of our federal priorities, and then we'll get into our recommendation for the list and how we go through that. So we'll talk about our, our current projects. We have a, a group of people called the United Front, where we band together to help our federal delegation help us, help them, help us, basically. And that partnership has been in existence for over 20 years and has brought in over $400 million in congressionally-directed spending into our area. The partners are the City of Eugene, Lane County, Springfield, Willamette, Parks and Recreation, Springfield Schools, and Lane Transit District right now. And partners come and go depending on their needs in the region. And basically, how we help our congressional delegation help us is that rather than receiving multiple lists from their districts asking for earmarks, they receive one list that's prioritized, and they don't have to choose between the projects. They find that to be very helpful. The United Front process is held up in DC and on the Hill as an example of good partnership and really vetting out projects that are important to the community. So, back to our current list of projects. The earmarks that were submitted in the current appropriation cycle that we're in are, we're still waiting for them. As you know, Congress entered into a continuing resolution, so they didn't pass any budgets except those budgets that deal with the military and war spending, so to speak. Out of all the 12 projects or so that we submitted, our two senators submitted their earmark requests together, and they submitted all but one United Front project. Mr. DeFazio handpicked several projects, and we are still waiting to see what happens to those earmarks as they sit in appropriations bills. One of those projects is the Forest Legacy Project. While traditionally, that is not an earmarked type of project, we did ask for a special favor from our senators to request an earmark for about $1.9 million. The Forest Legacy Program is a discretionary program where Congress allocates a certain amount of money to the program. Those projects are submitted to the states, then to the regions, and then to the federal government, and. government, and they prioritize them. Depending on how much money is in that fund, they start at the top, they fund the projects until the money runs out. Our project did not make the cut, even though it was on the final list. The money ran out before it got to us. But there is an earmark sitting out there, and we're still waiting for that. The second one would be a project that we partnered with the City of Springfield and Lane County on, our teen court expansion. We currently have two teen courts that serve the Bethel area and West Eugene, approximately about 110 students a year. These are youth that are involved in smaller crimes like theft, harassment, possession of drugs or alcohol. They're allowed to go into this program where they receive mentoring and peer advice. The recidivism is very, very low compared to youth that do not go through this program. Mr. DeFazio loves this program, he'd like to fund it, he submitted it for an earmark, and again, we're waiting to hear what happens to that. And those would be our two projects that we are still waiting on. So, given the current, and you have this spreadsheet, given the current state of earmarks at the federal level, and given that we like to keep projects on the list that are currently on the list, because we know that our delegation and their staff are working on them, we developed a list of projects throughout the year that had a good chance of federal funding even in the current state of earmarks on the Hill. This list was presented to the IGR Committee, and they voted unanimously to make the recommendation to you to adopt the entire list. And I will go through these one at a time. So the very first project that we are recommending would be Forest Legacy. Again, that's not an earmark request, and we wouldn't request an earmark this time. The City of Eugene has the very first Forest Legacy-funded project in the state, and we're very proud of that. And when we submitted our project, again, which would be Phase Two of the Forest Legacy Program, it would be for two parcels of property on the Ridge Line Trail, it was ranked first out of five projects for our state. It is now with the regional office, where they will do a ranking, and it will go to the federal Forest Service for final prioritization and inclusion on the list. And then again, depending on how much money Congress allocates to this, will determine whether or not our project makes the cut. Luckily, we've developed a really good working relationship with the federal agency personnel, and this last year, they actually gave us the scoring sheets, so we could see where we were weak with our project, and we were able to shore that up a little bit. The reason that it's under programmatic request is because there is another program that has been approved by the US Congress, it has not been allocated any money yet, and this particular project may be a better fit for that. And so what we are going to ask our congressional delegation is to appropriate money to that other program, so that we would have two chances of funding the Forest Legacy Program. The second programmatic request would be Metro Waterways. This is a project that we have had with a partner with Lane County and Springfield since 2003, when we entered into an agreement for cost-sharing with the US Army Corps of Engineers. There has been a long history of things that have happened with the Metro Waterways. If you think about it, it's sort of a cooperative urban watershed project, or you can think of it as a watershed capital improvement program. We had many, many public workshops and public outreach, looked at the practical alternatives, and recently came up with a list of projects that were priority. This program has already been approved, and so out of the Word of Bill, we would ask for a million dollars to fund the pre-construction, engineering, and design of two priority projects, one for the City of Eugene, which would be our highest project along Amazon Creek, which was identified as the Reach Five, and a $500,000 project for the City of Springfield, which is their highest priority project that came out of the study. So those would both be programmatic requests. The rest of these requests would be actual earmark requests. We are going to rely heavily on the Senate this appropriations round, rather than on the House, and we'll see what we can do. Again, teen court expansion, it's a very important project. We're asking for $750,000. It would expand the program to other areas, it would allow the City of Eugene to hire a second program supervisor and open up another office so we could serve more youth. And it would also locate teen courts, smaller-sized teen courts, in Cottage Grove, Florence, and Oak Ridge, which would be funded and operated through Lane County. Again, like I said, Mr. DeFazio thinks this is a fantastic project, and we hope we can convince our senators to move this forward. The second would be, and it's a current project, would be the Franklin Boulevard. This would fund NEPA and preliminary design on the Franklin Boulevard project from Walnut to Alder. And so it's our part of a partnership project that we have with the City of Springfield and LTD. This was a project request that we submitted for annual appropriations in 2009. We kind of reworked it last year, and although we submitted it for the reauthorization of the transportation bill, which is now, I guess, going on its 20th, it's been under continuing resolution, they're waiting to see where the money comes from and who's going to author it. Mr. DeFazio and his staff did author the current version that's out there, we're waiting to see what happens to that bill. This project is in that bill. We submitted a list of projects to Mr. DeFazio, he handpicked some, this is in there. This would get us going while we're waiting for that reauthorization to happen. It would be a $1.2 million request, and like I said, it's a current request. The next project is also a current request, excuse me, is the Police Special Operations Facility. Currently, the Police Special Operations, which is Special Weapons and Tactics, the Crisis Negotiation Team, Explosives Demolition Unit, the Vicodin Narcotics Team, and the EPD's Exercise Facility are all housed in a building that was built in 1945. It is not up to essential seismic standards. If we had a seismic event, all of that equipment is housed in one building. As you can about imagine, it wouldn't be a good scene if we needed to rely on those first responders and their equipment, and they're in a not seismically essential building. This would be a request for $425,000, which would bring that facility up to essential seismic standards. There is also an adjacent building that has been empty since 2000, it was also built in 1945, and this would help remodel, renovate that facility to allow these EPD teams to expand into that building as well. The next three are, actually, they're two different projects, but I split one in two, are, oh, thank you, Counselor Solomon, are new projects. So the Justin Path, which would be a Beltline path to Terry Street, it would construct a new path to serve 146-acre natural area by the Golden Gardens Park. It would be an important connector to neighborhood streets and bike lanes on Terry Street, and would connect the Fernridge Path, which is one of the most popular paths in our city. Staff has been looking for funding opportunities and has applied for different funds from different buckets of money, and this would just be one additional bucket of money that they hope to apply for. It's a $1.5 million request, and it would completely complete the construction of that. Then the last two are actually part of one project split in two. One's a little bit further along than the other, which is why we decided to split it. The Eugene Depot Passenger Platform and Rail Crossover would be a $200,000 request for planning and design. What it would do is it would build, help us prepare to build a layover platform for passengers and a layover track. Right now, we don't have the capacity to have more and better rail, just not even talk about faster rail. But we couldn't get more passenger trains on the track to the Eugene Depot, because we don't have anywhere to park them to get them out of the way of freight trains. That will be a growing concern as the Coos Bay Rail Line gets built up. They recently received the last 13 and a half million dollars that they need to complete their construction and upgrade to reopen that line. That will be increased freight traffic, which will compete on our line with passenger rail. If we had a layover platform and a layover track, we could increase the capacity of train travel in front of our depot, which would benefit the entire corridor, which is what we're looking at. The second one would be a vehicular loop, that would be $250,000 request for planning and master design. It would also include a group process to determine what is the best practical alternative to have transit access the depot. Right now, we don't have transit service to the depot, and that's all part of the multimoto transportation vision for the community. And so this would get us started on that track, no pun intended. So these are the projects that the IGR Committee recommended move forward as our federal priorities. And I just wanted to note something. Because of the state of earmarks on the federal level, we are going to have to try harder to look for additional funding sources. And so one of the things that we recommended to the IGR Committee that they also agreed with, was to develop another list, a secondary list of projects that we would look for discretionary and grant funds. So funds, if Congress is not going to do earmarks, there is money available, and that money has to go somewhere. We expect it to go to agencies, where those funds would become part of discretionary programs. There would be more opportunity for us to fund programs. So some of the projects that were on the current list, like the fire hydrants, like the West Eugene Transportation Study, we will put those on that list, that will be a living list that we will look to throughout the year to look for additional funding for different projects within the community. And we also have the opportunity, like I mentioned before, for the transportation reauthorization bill. So things like the Beltline project, and this now completely leaves my mind, but, well, turn it over. The Beltline, Coburg Road to River Road, the Highway 99 project, we, because the amounts for those projects are so large, exceeding $5 million, we've decided to put those on a list for the reauthorization of the transportation bill, because that's a much larger bucket of money, and we have a better shot of getting that funded. If we ask for $5 million in a federal appropriations out of the T-HUD bill, the likelihood that we would get close to $5 million would be very small, and the money that we receive would be the money that we could receive. We couldn't go back and ask for it unless we were willing to phase it in. We have a better chance of getting all of the money, or closer to all of the money through the reauthorization of the transportation bill. And so we made that recommendation to the IGR Committee, and they are recommending that those not move forward on the annual appropriations list. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
The only thing I wanted to add to that, and, because we talked about this once before as a possibility, that our firm who works with us in Washington was interested in looking for grant opportunities that might have to do with looking at the post office. But we actually, I just want to say for the world, that we actually have to have a project that goes with that. We have to have somebody, some interested partner with some plan to move forward to go after a grant. And in the past, we've heard from the Historic, Link Historic Society Museum, I think we've, there's been another group with Jerry Ross, and interested in an art museum. And some of that has to get a little life under it, so that we can have something that we can talk about in terms of trying to ensure that we save our post office and that incredible piece of both architecture and depression-era art that's inside. So that's just something that's, they are interested, we have our work to do.
Mayor Piercy, I actually did include that on the discretionary list, but you're absolutely right. Unless we know what bucket of money that we're looking at and who has to look in that bucket of money, there is an opportunity for the federal government to sell off sort of surplus property. But the requirements for that are very stringent as to who can purchase that property, and often, many strings come with that. Not knowing what it is and who the partners are makes it difficult to look for that funding. This is one of those situations where someone actually has to begin an idea, and then we can formulate it to move it forward.
It's a horse and cart.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So I've got George Pulling first, and Jennifer, then Andrea, and then Mike. George?
Well, I think these are all very good projects. You know, you go down the list, you look at the Forest Legacy, it's a, you know, second phase of an ongoing acquisition of the Ridge Line properties. The teen court's very, very beneficial to not only the teens that are actually going through it, but their families and the community in general. Anytime that you can spend money on education and rehabilitation as opposed to incarceration, it's a good thing, so, you know, very supportive of that. The police facilities, the special operations facilities, there's not any, we're not required to come up with any matching funds on that, is that correct?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Pulling, it depends on what bucket of money we eventually take that out of, but right now, we're asking for the full amount.
Okay, all right. Well, it's my understanding that this was not, these operations were not taken into consideration when we're looking at purchasing the new facility on Country Club, and for a number of reasons. One is the limitation of the size of the building, and two, also the type of operations that they are conducting. You want them separate from your patrol facility, just because of the nature of the beast. It's, you know, your special weapons, it's your bomb disposal people, they're part of the same department, you know, they're folks at Work Patrol on a normal basis, or detectives, whatever their normal assignment, but it's an additional assignment to their normal duties, and they've got different types of equipment that need different types of housing, so I'm very supportive of that. And also, the two railroad issues, particularly the Eugene Depot, the vehicular loop, let's don't reinvent the wheel on this. I remember eight years ago, we had this discussion. The thing I like about this is that it's for planning and design and master planning and group process. It's not giving the money to build it, it's just a, I guess, hopefully, we'll take what we did in the past and move forward from there, work with the stakeholders to come up with a workable solution for a vehicular loop at the rail station, which is, by the way, needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer?
Thank you, Mayor Piercy. Let's see, Brenda, a great presentation, this looks like a great list, we've certainly got your work cut out for you. On the Forest Legacy issue, are any of these 400 acres an overlap of what we're going to be discussing later this evening? Are these a separate 400 acres from the 500 we were talking about later tonight?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Solomon, they are separate. I can show you a map, too, so that you have a better idea. They're on the Ridge Line Trail, and, let's see, a better idea if you could see the map. Oh, wrong there, sorry.
I'm sorry if that was in my materials-
That's okay.
-and I didn't see them.
It's these two pieces of property, give you a better idea of where they are. The Forest Legacy Program is a very special program. It has to be a willing seller, it has to be land that's a very high ecological value. These are some of the last remaining oak savannas this far north in the country. It's very high-value land, it's why it's been ranked first in the state for a couple of years to be moved forward onto the list. So not all property is eligible for the Forest Legacy Project.
And am I correct to assume that that doesn't include maintenance over the years? It's just acquisition?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Solomon, yes. Yeah.
Okay. Then, let's see, two other questions. Are the appropriations requests in order of priority, or are they just, it's just on the paper?
Mayor Piercy, Counselor Solomon, they are not in order of priority. If you look at the top two, those do not need to be prioritized at all, because those are programmatic requests, and they stand alone. The bottom ones probably will need to be prioritized. It's kind of tricky, because they will not all compete out of the same bucket of money, and I would caution us to say, here's our top priority for the city, because I believe if we do that, we leave money on the table, because we're not going after every bucket of money that we can. And so I would say that these are all of our priorities.
Okay, sure. And then finally, under the teen court expansion, it refers to the establishment of one new teen court in both Junction City and Springfield, with the ongoing administration and operation- and operation of those programs, the responsibility of each city. And it would also allow the City of Eugene to hire a second program supervisor and open another office. But that does not include ongoing, so we will be responsible then for the ongoing funding of the second program supervisor and another office. Is that correct?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Solomon, that's correct, much in the same way that we run the two teen courts that we have now. We run them out of Lane County courts. And so while we participate in the program, Lane County is really the major partner in this. They actually submit the appropriations requests.
So we don't have to pay anything?
We do. This would, the $750,000 would fund that program. Are you asking if the money went away?
Well, yeah, I guess I'm just, obviously, John is aware of this request and knows that if we get funded, then we will get a second program supervisor and another office immediately. But in the out years, that will be our responsibility to pay for. Is that correct to say?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Andrea?
Thank you, Brenda, for the presentation. Can you talk a little bit more about the T-bill? Obviously, we didn't get the list of the other requests that are on that, but I would like for you to talk a little bit about the Highway 99 corridor and why we're not putting it on this list.
Absolutely, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Ortiz. The transportation reauthorization bill is a bill that comes up for renewal in Congress every six years. The last time it came up for renewal was about 18 months overdue. We expect it to be much longer overdue this time. We've been very fortunate that Mr. DeFazio and his staff, as Chair of the House Subcommittee on Surface Transportation, was the author of that bill. And about two and a half years ago, he asked for a list of projects to be included in that bill. These are earmarks, and they're big earmarks. This is a huge bucket of money, hundreds of millions of dollars. Unfortunately, the federal government, like local governments in the state, is struggling with how to pay for such a large program. One of the ideas is an increase in the national gas tax. We all know how difficult that conversation is. We have been in very close contact with Mr. DeFazio and his staff. We expect a call for projects. Because the annual appropriations requests pretty much have a cap on them, and we looked at the likelihood of how the projects would be funded in the reauthorization. We worked with Smith, Dawson, and Andrews to determine which projects had a better chance of being totally funded, or more closely to totally funded, through the reauthorization process than through the annual appropriations process. And so, and that list will be brought back to you in the future, once we have some better idea about what the T-bill's going to look like. The T-bill not only is a funding mechanism, but it is a policy bill as well. And so policies such as lease cost planning and VMT, all of those types of policies are all up in the air and on the table for that. But we have decided to recommend that the West Eugene Transportation Study, Beltline, because it's a $5 million request. Beltline, Coburg Road to River Road, would be a $5 million request for NEPA. West 11th and Beltline is a NEPA preliminary design, so again, close to $5 million. Highway 99, Garfield to Roosevelt, would be to install urban standard requirements on that, is a $6.5 million project. And then we have field-based reporting errors. We were able to make a connection to transportation because of the proximity to interstate highways. The very first part of that was funded through the previous transportation reauthorization. It's a $4.1 million project. Because the amounts of those projects, the price tags are so huge, we have a better chance of getting those funded through reauthorization instead of annual appropriations.
And we don't know yet when that is going to be acknowledged or finished, and whether or not that those projects will place, and in what order of importance. Are we just handing them, all four of them, and saying, this is what we want?
Well, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Ortiz, we will develop that list with staff, and bring that to the IGR committee for recommendation and prioritization, and then bring that to the full city council for your direction on how you would like us to submit those projects to, we're hoping, Mr. DeFazio, but it might be someone else this time. But yes, once we get a better idea of what that bill's going to look like and what it will allow, it will give us more opportunity to develop a more successful list.
Okay. Because, I mean, there's a lot of interest. ODOT's going to be doing their work on the road, and they're going to be rebuilding the bridge with urban standards, but not going up to the bridge or coming down. And, you know, just every day, I wish people would, you know, if they don't live in that area, take a drive down there. And there's always foot traffic on those bridges, and it's very unsafe for that community.
Well, I do have a note, Councilor Ortiz, that we will host a tour out there in the spring, and I'm hoping it will be with Allison Dame Camden, who is Mr. DeFazio's senior staff, who actually drafted the current bill. So, yes.
Make 'em walk across it.
Make 'em walk across it. That's right, yes.
They have to sign a waiver before they do. They're not responsible, because those cars travel pretty fast, and it just seems like it's time. If ODOT's doing the road and the bridge, we need to do our part to have that be a safer environment for the people in that area. Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. Brenda, appreciate all the hard work on this, as always. Could you give me a little bit more information, or maybe from John or from someone, of the details of what's involved in the second part of the vehicular loop that's listed in the rail portion here at the bottom? Is that plan still contained, to be specific, the idea of bisecting the OES parking lot?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Clark, all of the information that was gathered, up to the point where the discussion stopped, will be the starting point for the new discussion, the group process that we're hoping to get the $250,000 to fund. When the discussion stopped on the vehicular loop, it was a different time. It wasn't many years ago. But as Councilor Pryor pointed out, we have to have new and different discussions. And so we have a better idea of transit and what we want for our community. We have a hope that there will be funding for rail, and we have to have a new conversation. We don't want to get rid of the information that we collected.
So this particular funding is to re-envision what we might do there and to have a new discussion?
Mayor Piercy, Councilor Clark-
Let me be more specific, even than that. I don't want to support this if it's something that we continue down the road of planning to put a road through their parking lot there for OES. I think that would do immense damage to an institution downtown. That would give me great concern. So if this is a process by which we might be able to look at other options to create what we need there, then I would probably be supportive of it.
Well, Mayor Piercy, Councilor Clark, it is a process to look at practical alternatives. There is not an alternative that's been decided upon, which is why we would like the $250,000. We need to have a new discussion with the community to see how we are going to provide transit services and better vehicle service to the rail depot, which we hope to be the southern terminus of the Northwest Corridor.
Right. And I know the mayor's, and you have done a great deal of work on all of that, and I support it, and I appreciate it. And I, the mayor and I were talking about it earlier tonight, that if that's the gateway to our community, that many people will see with that as their mode of transportation to get here, we may want to be looking at how do we re-envision that area in an appropriate way. And I think that's a good idea. So as long as we're not tied into that one solution there, I think I can support that. Thank you.
George Brown?
One of my questions was already answered, and a couple other ones I think I can direct to the police chief.
Okay. All right. So I think we've answered our, anybody else? All right, you want to put a motion on the table?
I move to adopt the 2011 federal priority project list recommendations.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor, none in opposition, passes. Thank you all very much. Thank you, Brenda. And now we'll go on to the next item on our agenda.
Well, I did.
And that's going to be the adoption of Resolution 5018. The manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll just give a quick outline to frame your discussion. We request permission to continue distributing publications to all neighborhood residents and to assist with outreach and education for the neighborhood groups. And we talk about all, it's both city and non-city residents in this case, in those neighborhoods. Supporting the proposed resolution would simply allow these groups to keep their members informed about issues of importance and to be eligible to participate in the Strategic Neighborhood Assessment and Planning Program, or SNAPs. And the groups would still have to compete with other eligible applicants in the selection process. If selected, the focus of a SNAP would be to take a first step in moving recommendations of the 2006 transition report forward by conducting an outreach process to assess and educate residents on the state of governance and service delivery issues, and on the possible options concerning them. And the city's support of the initiative addresses a critical need for rebuilding trust among different stakeholders, a key factor to moving forward on a transition framework for the area.
Thank you. Questions?
Thank you, Mayor. I think I mentioned this, as I break things here, I think I mentioned this when I spoke after the last Santa Clara Community Organization meeting under items, that the folks in River Road and Santa Clara have begun to work more closely together. There's a group who've come together to try and look at what will come of what we're doing with Envision Eugene, to create a much more detailed refinement plan for the areas, and to take a little bit more ownership of the process of planning their community in that area, much like what has been done in the Jefferson neighborhood. This is important to a lot of folks out there, and it has some real energy behind it. And I think it's an area where, if a lot of the residents are now getting to a place where they want to have a community-led discussion in a very positive way about things that involve the transition for some of those folks from county to city, it's a better way for us to go at it than it is to have the annexation problems that we've had out there for years and years. And it's a very proactive group of folks who are working hard on this. So I would urge my colleagues to support this, because I believe this is a citizen and neighborhood-led effort to try and say, okay, what do we do with the things out here? Their SNAP application would give them the staff help they need to do a more robust job of that. And I think it would be a real help to the work that a lot of the folks in that area of our community want to see done. So, and I think the communication piece is also critically important. The more we can communicate with both residents and non-residents in that checkerboard area of our community, of in and out of the city, the better off everyone is. And it's been a real help so far. So I'd urge us to support it.
Jennifer?
Well, I'm not really particularly in favor of this. And I've talked to Andrea about it, and Michael Kinnison as well. But I don't see this as particularly different than the 2006 effort that the River Road group did. And in fact, they produced a report, and there was lots of fanfare around it. And as for all I know, it sat on a shelf this whole time, because we haven't had any follow-up activities or presentations around the recommendations out of that report. And then Mike talks of the transition as if it's going to happen. And I don't believe for a second that there is enough support out there to transition people from the county to the city. I just feel like there's, and that's what needs to happen, and I just feel like those folks just thwart us at every turn. And I just, I don't, I just feel like our funds would be better directed towards the neighborhood organizations that are within the city and that have programs that would improve their communities, would be more successful than this particular, these two particular organizations.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So I was, well, so, you know, this is an ongoing history, you know, the community probably knows the history better than I do, because I live in Trainsong. But we did do the white paper in 2006. And I think that I would support this, because I think that this is moving them down the road. When I listen to them talk, and I've talked to Becky, not Becky Riley, Carleen, and Jerry Finnegan, and basically what I got from them is that they feel that this is the point where they need to do a survey, get the information out to the community that's there now, and basically go one of three directions: vote to incorporate, self-incorporate, vote to annex, or those would be the two options. And then to move things down the court, basically. And I feel like they are not saying that that's what the outcome's going to be, but that would be something that they would feel comfortable with having the conversation about, and to educate the people. Because I truly believe that there are a lot of people out there that don't realize the history. And I think, and I've encouraged them, when they do this work, to be more positive about it, and not to have this feeling like the city has done something wrong to them 20 years ago, you know. That's history. Let's move things down the road. I think that there's a small group of people that have been working really hard on this. They would like to continue it. I was kind of concerned about the dollar amount, but any money that's going to be, they are not eligible for any of the SNAP grants. There's not going to be any dollar amount outside of staff time, and I don't know how much staff time that is. So that, you know, that is a piece of it. And I'm not too concerned. I mean, they talk constantly about rebuilding the trust of government. And that has to be an individual choice, in my opinion. You can't, there's nothing we're going to do that's going to make people either trust government or not trust it. But I just feel like if this is the opportunity for them to move things down the court with that white paper, and to at some point somehow decide which way they're going to go, then I think that we should do it. So I think I'm going to, I think that's all I have to share.
Alan?
Mike, can you clarify the dollars and the time commitment?
Sure. Michael Kinnison, I'm the manager of Neighborhood Services. So the time commitment, we don't, the first thing we'll do if, Mike should clarify one thing, is that all this is asking is that these community organizations are actually eligible for the SNAP. So later this week, it's a competitive process. We have four applications, and we're going to be reviewing and ranking and make a decision on that. So your decision tonight does not guarantee that they actually participate. But one of the first things we'll do, if they were awarded this, is to spend time and scope the project out. So what we anticipate is that with a SNAP is a four- to six-month commitment. And then your second question, Alan, was in terms of-
Time commitment.
Time commitment is probably 15 to 20 hours a week of a staff person for four to six months.
Okay, that's kind of substantial. So can you describe the SNAP process for us? And has there been any others besides Trainsong?
Yes. Well, SNAP is really Strategic Neighborhood Assessment and Planning. So it's not really implementation. And what it is really is, what we've done is put together a process. It's really an organizing tool for neighborhoods. And it's flexible enough to accommodate a neighborhood group that might want to just do some goal-setting and visioning and establishing a work plan for their entire neighborhood, which is what we've just done with Trainsong neighbors. And they were the first pilot SNAP, and we're completing that process now. But the process can also accommodate a specific project or address a concern or issue within a neighborhood. So it's really, what you're getting is staff time to help you develop a work plan around a particular issue. And in the case of the River Road in Santa Clara, it's really focusing on helping them develop a public outreach and education campaign around the transition framework that really has been kind of sitting on a shelf for a number of years now. But there's energy there to, and a number of other factors happening right now, it seems timely to start having that conversation again. So this is really staff time, helping them design a public outreach and education program, helping them figure out what are the best ways to connect with folks, how to design your workshops, how to do a town hall, how to get newsletters out and cover that kind of information, what are the best questions to put in a survey format to get the information that you need, that kind of thing.
I agree with Andrea. I think people have long memories. And if this can help with some of the distressed that's out there, and something we'll probably continue to do for a long time, hopefully not forever, but I think it should help us move down the road and get this project on track. on track.
So, are you finished, Alan?
Yeah.
I just want to make a couple of comments here. Personally, I'm happy to support this, but actually, one of the things I would ask back is some sort of formal recognition by, from those neighborhood associations that they're getting, this, this help from us, because I think that's part of the deal, is sort of recognizing, when the city is stepping forward and offering to be a collaborative and helpful partner, that there's some recognition that comes back from, excuse, sorry, those neighborhood associations.
Choked up about this, don't you?
I am. Very choked up. And I, I mean, I'm just saying that, as myself, that I just think that's an important piece, just as I think it's important for us to recognize, there's hardly a thing that we do in this community that doesn't have some people from that area participating in it. They're very big participators in, there's no border there, and they're very big participators in our, in our community in many, many ways. And so, I think we need to recognize that, and they need to recognize that we are, when we extend our hand, and I'd appreciate that kind of recognition. I know that this would only okay them to compete, I, I understand that. I do think the transition, continuing to work on this transition is important, and actually, I just want to put out there that I think, given the work we've been doing on collaborative processes, and how to get everybody to the table and deal with, in this case, I hate to keep saying this, but, you know, their fears and their best outcomes kind of, I mean, I think they're ripe for that kind of discussion, and we've learned a lot from the last time we did it. And so, hopefully, that can help us with, to do more and better in this discussion. Now, a lot of those folks are participating in the Envision Eugene process, so they're getting, they've got a lot of those skills going now, too. So, I do think it's an optimal moment to have a more collaborative, and how we're going to move forward together as a broader community, and so, I think it's a great idea. I've got Mike for a second round, and then Jennifer.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to say that I, I think it's time for us to, I, I would define, I agree with Andrea, that it's time for us to kind of start a new chapter with how we deal with River Road and Santa Clara. I, and I too would hope that they recognize that we're trying to do that. We've done it before with the cherry-stemming annexation questions that we've addressed here at the table, to try and, and be a more inclusive partner. But I would say, Jennifer, in, in response to your point about what was done in 2006, I agree with you that that transition plan that we paid for was really more of a statement of goals, I would say. I mean, when you read that, that shows in specifics, this is the sort of definition of our neighborhood and the way we like it and how we'd like it to continue, and this is the manner in which we'd like to be dealt with with regard to land use. The Santa Clara neighborhood then went and did this in 2008, which was the blueprint project, to talk about the specific definitions of specific areas and map it out and show where different things are that are of value to the Santa Clara community and their areas. What this opportunity does, I think, with, when they're competing for the potential to get a SNAP grant, is to now take all this work that they've done and create a plan of action. What are we going to do with this now? What are we going to do with this to, to become part of Eugene, to separate out, to figure out who we want to be and how we want to move forward, instead of getting, staying stuck in the same place? Some of the consequences of that are that there are a whole host of people who live in Santa Clara and River Road who may rent their houses, and they don't really know whether they live in the city or the county. There are a lot of people in that condition, and so, something happens and they have to call the police, and they may, they may not know that they live in the county, and they end up calling Eugene. The education process that'll go along with this is going to help a lot of people, and so I think it's a good idea. So, I hope you can support it.
Before I get to you, Jennifer, I've got two more in the first round, Chris and then Betty. Chris?
Oh, thanks. If this were a duplication of something that had already been done, it's been done, it's on the shelf, and we're just doing it again, I would, I would agree. You don't want to do the same thing over and over again. I think the conversation, though, it needs to be extended. So, we have the work that was done before, and I remember, and that left some people wanting. When that process was done, there were some folks who still felt they hadn't gotten everything they wanted, there was still some additional conversation that needed to take place. And I, and I would hope that this would be the next phase, the next continuation of that conversation, to begin to refine it even more. As the mayor began to point out, a collaborative discussion does take longer than just a simple, I heard what you had to say, now I'm going to go make, you know, whatever decision I need to make. And yeah, it is a special circumstance, there's no denying it, but I think the reason why you want to have a special circumstance here is because if you look at that map up on the wall, River Road and Santa Clara is something we absolutely have to deal with.
That's right.
We have to deal with it as collaboratively and as positively as we can, because they do have long memories. And there were some significant events that have happened in that history that we do have to try to turn around and make the best of. And so, for that reason, I would support the proposal with, with the caution, that it not just be the same thing again. You want to have it be the next best iteration, not just the same thing again. I think that's, that's a valid point. And my hope would be that this process would be the next step, not just a repeat. And I think the folks in Santa Clara River Road want this to be the next step, and they want to feel like we care enough about our community and about them that we want to take this next step. Because I think it's important, for the sake of the community in the long term, that we, that we deal with this, and we deal with it appropriately. So, I can, I can support it with what I think it's going to be, and what I hope it's going to be.
Betty?
Mike just reminded me that we did pay a lot of money for that report before, when you used the words "paid for."
Yeah, I'll fix it.
And I also, I've been sitting here thinking, anytime we've discussed that area, there've been a lot of people in the audience, I don't see them tonight, who were saying, you're trying to annex us. Maybe they all moved away or died, I don't know, but they were-
They'll be here to see us soon.
Well, they, they were, they would be very, I mean, a lot of people have been very angry every time, because you say "transition," isn't that just another word for annexation?
Did you ask me?
I'm asking you.
Well, it's certainly part of the, it's certainly part of the conversation. I mean, we, you can't, we'd be naive to say that that's not going to be part of this conversation, but that, the transition really refers to transition into a more urbanized setting, and that, that involves a host of, a number of different issues in that area. Even if it doesn't annex, it is certainly going to continue to urbanize, it's going to be continuing to have changes and infill and development there that's changing the, the character of that community that's of concern to, to folks there. They have that, a very complex mosaic of different service districts that will continue to get more and more complex if-
They're worried about-
Yes, so, there's governance issues that will still have to be dealt with there, so regardless of whether annexation or not, there, the transition between a more urbanized area is going to continue to happen, and there's going to be issues that need to be dealt, dealt with, one way or the other.
Well, I think it's unfortunate that they didn't either incorporate as a city or annex a long time ago. This checkerboard annexation is crazy. I don't, I assume I will vote for this, since it's, but it's, I think it's a situation we don't know what to do about, and I don't know what, and I do think, when you say "transition," I, I don't know if, there, some of them don't think we need, they need transition, I know. But they think they're okay as they are. Thank you.
Jennifer, you're next.
Uh, you know, I'll pass. Okay, Andrea?
So, I wanted to clarify that-
She's only in her second round.
It's my understanding that the transition team effort was paid for out of the sewer-
Sewer funds.
Sewer funds. It wasn't direct money, there was money that was put aside, that was money from their sewer-
The special assessment.
Yeah, the special assessment. So, I don't think any dollars from our coffers went out of there. And, and, you know, the whole conversation around annexation, you know, when I've talked to folks out there anecdotally, you know, if they chose to, not that I'm telling them to, because it's not my decision, to do annexation, that would get them their own city councillor, that would get their own representation there. And I mean, I think that's one of the issues that they have, is they felt like the city has made decisions for them without representation. And, you know, the only way to fix that is for them to, to do that. And so, everything else, I think, has been said.
Okay, Mike?
Yeah, I was just going to say that, along with what Andrea said, they would say that they spent their money for that transition plan, because it was money that they paid into the sewer fund system, and they're very, they're very proprietary about that part of the conversation.
That's a happy memory, too, isn't it?
I think we're being back down memory lane here.
The, the other piece, though, that's important here, I think, is that, is, there's kind of two tracks of conversations going on right now, in, around this issue. You've got some things going on over at the county where there's discussions about ending 190 agreements and 195 agreements, and the, some of the special districts have some real strong concerns, and are asking the county to, to step up their efforts in the process. And that's kind of the one kind of track of how to deal with what's going on out there. I see what's going on with the folks associated with the SNAP's grant request as kind of the other track, trying to take a more positive sort of collaborative approach to how do we take a longer-term, smarter look at what needs to get done here? How is this, how are all of these issues impacting everybody here? And how do we move forward together, instead of having, you know, fights over this? So, I think it's a more productive way to move forward. Thanks.
Want to put the motion on the table?
Yes, I will. Move to adopt Resolution 5018 authorizing exceptions to the limited recognition policies for River Road and Santa Clara community organizations, allowing for participation in the SNAP program, and continued expenditure of special assessment bond funds for printing and mailing of neighborhood publications to non-city addresses.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate.
Jennifer, you can help.
Seven and a, ah!
Seven and nine.
Seven and a half. Thank you.
Half, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I guess, thanks very much. That finishes our business for our-
Thank you, Jennifer.
Jennifer, thank you very much.